I guess if you address the bodies, what they would say, what they would...
Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. June? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here.
Seven present.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is one of the first of few meetings to discuss the budget and to take a vote on line items by line items. We do have a lot on the agenda. About twenty-one pages to look at, to take a vote on, and we can go each page by page, take a vote, discuss and take a vote. There's no rush to go through all the pages or go through the agenda tonight. If we don't finish tonight, we can do next Monday meeting also, and it might be better to have this in two meetings than in one. If we wouldn't miss anything, we could revisit it next week and make an amendment to it and what have you. And as the superintendent had explained also, during these meetings for this vote, we have to bring it back on eighteen for the adoption in front of regular meeting for the full body meeting as well. With that said, need a motion to vote for the action of necessity because the school committee will be voting for the own bottom line figure by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Mon. Roll call, please.
Ms. June? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page one, we're going to just go, we're cut and dry here, go by the page by the number. Page one, number eleven, ten, School Committee. Total amount for approval, one hundred fifteen thousand five hundred. Ms. Lay?
Just want to give me one second to catch up. Thank you. Page, page one?
Section.
Section three.
Through Mr. Superintendent to Billy Joel, if you could give us a brief summary on the School Committee, page one, line item, please.
So I passed out a presentation. I'm not going to go line by line. It's more or less a summary document for you to use. So if you do, if we do meet again next week, it actually gives you a page by page presentation on what the changes are. I'm waiting for this to show up on the screen. I don't know why it's not. Okay, so the first slide that you have in your presentation is just a reminder of where the funding came from, all the new ESR money, and it's the second.
This thing.
Yes.
Is it going to be on the screen?
It's supposed to be, yes. I don't know where he went, but anyway, so the first slide, okay, good, there you go.
Wait till it comes on for millions of viewers.
So with this presentation, much of it will sound redundant, being that we were committed to being consistent with the budget process, and we wanted to reiterate the key points that you should, that we wanted you to understand. There should be nothing new in this presentation with strategy. Instead, it should just merely show the detailed view of the accounting. So this first spreadsheet is just what you have received with the new ESR money and the total new money through general fund. It's showing you how we did give sixteen point six million new dollars to the schools. In addition to a three million dollar coach supplement, that's where the nineteen million that you see in the budget book comes from. This is the second sheet of the ESR spreadsheet. The rest of the new spending costs were all tied directly to our strategic goals. I won't go through all of that. Last week, I did list one hundred and thirty-four positions that made up the sixteen point six million dollars in purchases. That's on this next slide that shows the five assistant principals, two school clerks, you know, twenty PBR teachers, et cetera, et cetera, thirty-six parers. It's all listed there so that you could see a nice summary. Any new position that we do have has to go through two stages of authorization. One, we go through this budget approval process that you'll see the position in the budget, but two, then we have to do the permission to post process. So you have two opportunities before we make a move with anything. What the supplements bought is the next slide. We wanted to let you know that with the mental health supplement of three million dollars, we bought twenty-two social workers, a BCBA, a behavior specialist. With the behavior support supplement of two point four million, we bought twenty PBR interventionist teachers, ten parers, and two security guards. With the building sub supplements, we bought ten building-based subs and twenty-six parers. With the Renaissance supplements, this was a little more difficult because last year they specified exactly what their Renaissance dollars were buying. This year, the Renaissance dollars were included in their overall all-school site budget process, but these are the positions that were new. They bought assistant principals this past year after the budget process, math resource teachers, and parent liaisons. So all of the supplements equaled eight point three million dollars. The next slide is just, I'm trying to go through this.
You're going fast, but I'm trying to read the body language of some of our new committee members. So seventy percent approximately of the entire budget was planned for directly by school site councils, principals, parents, teachers. What Ms. Turner is going through is a summary of what occurred as a result of those decisions. You do have a subcommittee meeting coming up for the school site councils actually to present directly. So within your budget of the seventy percent that were planned directly by our school site councils, Ms. Turner's given a summary of the additional investment that the committee made, and that authorization was provided before the school site councils. That resulted in the recommendations that are showing up in your budget book. So she's summarizing those in total for you. Thank you.
In addition, go ahead, sure.
Move on. I just want to be clear. So this eight point three million, this was spent in the current year and is now rolling into the next year?
No, I'm sorry. I am going fast. I'm going fast. Yeah, I'm going too fast because I want to get to the pages for you guys because I know that's what you want.
Yeah.
Okay, but no, so let me just clarify. The mental health, behavior support, and building-based supplements are brand new this year. The Renaissance supplement, last year, the school committee decided to take some of the positions we had recommended, put it into a bucket for the Renaissance schools. So the positions they bought for this current year were known to me because it was identified specifically for that bucket of money. Those funds have now rolled into this current year. So of the four different supplements, three are brand new. The Renaissance supplements are a continuation of current year. Does that answer your question?
I just want to be clear. So like the mental health supplement, we went through this process of trying to hire the twenty-two social workers for this current school year. Is this an additional twenty-two or is it the same? So it's the same twenty-two, okay.
I do understand your question.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, you're right. And those were positions that were added, the mental health and the PBR teachers both. So if you look at it like that, when I say they're new money, it's new to the budget. It was not included in the original budget last year. That's what I...
It was coming from ESR?
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
I just have a question. Are these positions being funded by ESR funds, and when ESR stops, how are we going to continue with this?
Let me help you out here with the budget book. So if you take your budget book, which is the larger book here, and if you go to section seven, page two, that's your sustainability of ESR investments?
Which is also on the screen in front of you, too.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Also on the screen in front of you. So there's, I think that's an important question, Ms. Del Rossi, that we'll continue to talk about not only this fiscal year, but going through this fiscal year into next. So we make an adjustment to our ESR plan each budget cycle. As well, we make sure we maintain it over the full three-year horizon. So you'll see in this, you see that year two is the current fiscal year. That's what you're in right now. But you can look over to FY twenty-four, and we have planned funding to maintain all of those investments into fiscal year twenty-four. Two things that will occur in fiscal year twenty-four. We will see an additional increase in the Student Opportunity Act, at which point the committee can, and we plan to recommend, shifting some of these expenditures to the general fund. We expect that to also occur based on the information that we have provided for fiscal year twenty-five as part of our maintenance of or sustainability of these investments. You will also, as a committee, identify, as we can certainly see here, some of these investments would not be needed for sustainability. One of them that comes up that we're planning to sustain into next year, but we are not planning to sustain into FY twenty-five, might be your substitute supplements. We believe that at some point, the substitute environment we're in is an outgrowth of COVID, and we don't believe that the committee, at this point, our projection is not that the committee is going to continue to need to put three million dollars of investment for classroom coverages. There are other items there within this that we are going to have to manage, and you're identifying some of them, Ms. Del Rossi, that we're going to be managing for sustainability. But the confidence the committee should have right now is that this is an approach that we are taking consciously each day as we manage the budget, and you have a direct plan in front of you for ESR dollars to maintain it with a hundred percent certainty into FY twenty-four, all of these investments, if the committee so chooses when you go through the FY twenty-four planning process. So you have at least a two-year sustainability window in front of you.
Can I just ask, so all, like, these employees that are going to be hired under this, will they only sign a two-year contract?
They come to us, all of our employees come to us year to year, depending on where they are within their tenure. Each of the positions that are directly associated with the grant, they get posted as grant-funded. Within this current window, however, what we've determined to do is allow our schools to budget with an entire funding plan. Our finance office will be able to manage across these funds, and then at the end of this year and going into next year, we'll go through the same process again. So within our current environment, for any of our employees that come to us that are non-tenured, everyone knows that if there's not a guarantee of continuity of employment, everything's based on appropriation from the school committee, and everything's based on a determination at these meetings. So we don't make a guarantee. However, the committee has at your disposal certainty around funding that if you so choose next year, you can certainly reinstate the funding for all of these positions at least into next year, and we also, not, I'm sorry, two years, next year and the year after. Also, we are working through, as you see, some shifts that were made this year. As we get the Student Opportunity Act guarantee with each governor's projection, we move some of these dollars into the general fund, which overcomes some of the cliff, and we'll be able to do that for the next two years. So you have more confidence in this year's budget of sustainability than you would have in any other year budget. But I think for the viewing audience, each decision of appropriation is made at these budget meetings each year. So we don't make a commitment to anybody that there's a certainty of continuous investment from the committee, other than the contracts you sign with the bargaining units. Those have multi-year commitments. So that's where tenure and professional status all come into play as to whose rights are win.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you all set? Ms. Turner? Ms. Mon?
Just to put a fine point on that, because I do believe it's part of Ms. Del Rossi's question. With the, you know, based on allocation and funding, does it resolve us of having to pay unemployment costs?
Mr. Superintendent?
I don't have any information that would suggest such. I do believe all of the employment matters, and that's going to be something that particularly as we go into FY twenty-four's budgeting is going to be highly critical, which is where you see that section seven. And remember kind of the graphic I showed before. Each time we have a budget conversation from this point forward, each time we talk about a transfer, each time you get a budget update, this notion of the fiscal cliff in front of us, sustainability of investments, you're now a year out in front. It's a conversation that directly impacts you into FY twenty-five. So you'll be planning FY twenty-four, and it'll hit you for FY twenty-five. So we'll be going forward, and you should expect that every conversation you have with Ms. Turner with this next fiscal year going forward as part of her budget updates will include a discussion along those lines.
That's a yes. We'll have to pay those unemployment costs. Yeah.
If they don't get hired somewhere else, right?
If nothing else, I want to thank Ms. CFO for that brief summary of overview of the budget process tonight and for the comments and answers. What I recommend going forward for the rest of tonight is that we go page by page and line item by line item, and we could have the CFO explain, give a brief summary of each line item to be voted on, and if we can keep the comments and the questions to the line item that we're talking about instead of jumping back and forth to the items that are down on the, down the pages, that will keep this meeting much more efficient and moving forward. Ms. Lay, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think, I'm sorry for the interruption, but I don't think the CFO has finished her presentation yet. We just barely started.
Okay. That's why I thought I was asking if she's finished. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Ron, and I would like to hear the presentation, too, but I wanted to just mention overall, we had asked, we've had a couple of motions asking for reports, and this information, for instance, I had a motion, I don't remember when it was, maybe the first meeting in April, asking regarding the interventions that are happening at the middle schools and how, I'm wondering if we're going to get that information because I think that would help us inform our decision-making. Some of these, there were some other motions out there for information that pertains to the budget. So that would be my question through you to the superintendent.
So I'm not directly understanding the direct tie to the budgeting process, but if you pull that out at the time when you see it on which page and which question, staff's available to answer any questions that you got on any line item, any page.
Okay, just to clarify what I mean, we've added a great deal of funding, and I believe it is ESR money, but the idea to help impact the losses our children have had through the pandemic. One would be the interventions, another one would be the professional development. There's been a great deal of money added to those funds, and I would just like to see a plan of how that money is going to be utilized. I imagine that when the administration came up with those numbers, they had a plan of why they needed them. So I'm looking for some backup documentation, like, let's say, and I'm just off the top of my head, we're increasing professional development expenses by six million dollars because evidence shows that when teachers get additional training, they do better. Where, you know, I'd like to, or even the motion I had at the last meeting asking, what are we doing for the little ones who have behavior problems? We've increased a great deal of resources, and I'm not faulting that, on behavior supports within the classroom and within the schools. What I'm looking for is an explanation of how that money is going to be used. That's what I mean. But there's been big buckets, and those are three areas that come right to the top of my head. Mental health services obviously is another one. But to just see more than the number, to get a sense, these are the programs that are going to be in our schools now to support behavior, to support student learning. I don't know if that helps to clarify.
No, it, thank you.
The good news is that I only have one page left of the presentation before we go into page by page, and it was just the final document that the superintendent was referring to, which is showing that there's three years of ESR funds budgeted. This, one, one good analogy that someone made me realize about whether or not a position will go away or not, someone said if you have an accident or an emergency, you're going to spend a lot on triage and those, you know, right after it happens, and then eventually the cost of medical care goes down, right? So they said even if we do have to hire a bunch of positions over the next two years to address learning loss, look at that as triage and that we may eventually lose some of those positions as things normalize. The main point on this spreadsheet, though, is to let you know that there are no unbudgeted buckets of money. Every dollar is budgeted throughout the three-year cycle of ESR. So now I can get into changes by budget book as the mayor asked. I will go page by page and refer to the DOE function of the page and just point out any major changes so that you know whether or not you want to stop and ask questions. So the first page is the School Committee page. The only changes that occurred there, after doing a historical cost analysis, we updated the membership and expense lines to reflect the increase of cost. And the subscription line, which has not been used in several years, was reduced due to no historical spending. The twelve hundred series, which is the superintendent's office, these are the assistant superintendents and chiefs. They are supposed to be reflected in other areas of the budget, but according to DOE function codes, anyone that's an assistant superintendent has to be listed here. This page increased by seventy-eight thousand, which only includes contractually obligated increases and the increased cost of longstanding organizational subscriptions. And then I listed several examples so that you could see what would be found under those costs. The next page is the fourteen hundred series. This page did increase drastically.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, I think we should go page by page, take a vote, and then before we move on to the next one. Before we take any more comments on the School Committee line item? No, no other comment? Did we, we had a long discussion, did I take a motion, get a motion already? Second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. We now go to page two, the superintendent line item of $1,230,684. Mr. Superintendent? Through you to the CFO.
This is the page that I referenced that has the contractually obligated increases and the increased cost of the longstanding organizational subscriptions.
Second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page three, 1,400, Finance and Administrative Services in the amount of $3,444,499. Ms. CFO?
This page has an $803,000 increase to the general fund, which is the part that we're voting on. I did list in the page by page, or the page change summaries, thing, grant-funded positions, so that you're aware of that now that we're putting it all in one document. One thing that this does show an increase for is six clerks. That would include the transportation clerk that was added mid-year, the clerk to support summer and after-school programming, an addition of a payroll clerk, a parent leadership institute clerk, which was listed on the Esser plan last year, student resource center clerk, which was listed on the Esser plan last year, and a family resource center clerk. I, it's really family resource center support staff. I'm not sure if we'd call it a clerk or not, but I put it in the clerk line at this time. I wanted to point out that we did separate out the finance officer payroll position. As you know, last year when we had multiple retirees leave the office, one of the clerk positions was replaced with a higher-level finance officer position. It wasn't, it wasn't in addition to, it was replacing one of the existing ones. With all of the new Esser spending, the office is significantly overburdened. It's, we need, definitely need a new position in that office. Moved the director of technology from Esser to general fund. This is an example of trying to steer clear of that funding cliff that we're talking about. We want to try to move as many positions as we can to the general fund. We added two part-time technology support positions. We increased postage by $10,000 based upon need. We added a central office supply line, since we have not had this in many years, despite the need to purchase office supplies, including toner, paper folders, packet folders, envelopes, et cetera. It's amazing how we end up having to charge it to lines, find the money, so to speak. This year, we did a historical spending analysis to make sure that we fund the lines that we have been using, not that we've been using, but that we need money in, so that you can see accurate year-to-date budget reports. We have a contracted service, financial service line that increased due to plans for the ERS upgrades, such as onboard and interactive budget updates, et cetera. That onboard, and right now, we currently have people come to HR and fill out a bunch of paperwork by hand. So then we have to retype it, and it goes through a cycle of HR, payroll, then city hall. If we end up implementing a software program like this onboard and software, the employee would get an email listing out all of the forms that they need to fill out. They would be entered by the employee themselves or the applicant themselves, and then we could input that into our current ERS system. So those are the type of costs that would be included in that line. The recruitment and advertising line increased by $40,000 to support initiatives to diversify staff and to just hire people to obtain qualified staff. We also have an increased cost for out-of-state query checks, an increased cost of administrative technology due to the increased need for ransomware and cybersecurity, replacement parts for device initiatives, infrastructure and firewalls.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes, and I should ask for the other page, too. So when I was going through this to kind of freshen my brain about it, I noticed that the numbers in this book are more than what was on the actual approved 2022 budget. So I'm just wondering why that is?
Can you give an example?
Yeah, so if I have the 2022 budget, approved budget pulled up here, right, and I look at, say, the manager of ICTS, it's in the general fund, right, for $102,707. But if you actually look at the 2022 budget line item, it was 98,402.
That, so does it include the rate, the raises? So like when we had the budget, they were still in negotiations? So if you, there might have been a position that was in there without the raise, because we can't put the assumed rate increases with the, you know, you're in negotiations with the union. So you don't put that, and you put it in a placeholder line, and then you spread those raises, and that's what it would be?
Okay, thank you. That's what I kind of thought.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just quick questions on the contracted services. So the fair student funding, is that going towards fair student funding?
Which line?
I'm sorry, I'm on page two, contracted services, under Finance and Operations, 1410. There's three different contract services lines. I'm just curious.
Oh, yes, okay. So there's three different, yes, so fair student funding is not going, as a matter of fact, we may not even need it soon, the $10,000, if you're referring to the $10,000. So the, when we implemented fair student funding, we were going through COVID and all that, too. So, and there was a lot of staff turnover with, my entire office is all new. So we did it again this year where we had the consultant work with us and help us expand the algorithm. I put it in here just for safety, as far as if we needed one more year to ensure that we have support of the consultants when we make additional changes, like weight increases, things like that. The other contracted services, it's the financial audit, which is the Powers &amp; Sullivan audit that the city does, and that's the portion they charge to us. And then contracted
That's for the full district. It's not like for the student accounts or anything like that?
Right. That, that $35,000 or whatever, I think it's, yes, I can't see anymore. This is awful. Thirty-five thousand for the financial audit is what the city charges us for the overall annual audit. And then the miscellaneous contracted services, that's the one when I was referring to the onboard and implementation, you know, like to do that HR onboard. And then the superintendent and I were hoping, and we're hoping it could happen this year, that we can get an award next year for the budget, like the way the city did. And the way to do that is we would do an interactive budget module, where not only would you get this book, but there would be an interactive link on the website where people could click on it and see the backup documentation for everything. It would just be more interactive and make everything more understandable. So that includes those two items. Again, we would need to come in front of you first to get permission to enter before we could proceed with any of those.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Here we go. Need a motion to approve the figure by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We'll now go to page four, Finance and Operations in the amount of $1,412,216. Ms. CFO?
We actually just did that page. We did two.
We did two at the same time? Okay.
Yeah, we did those together.
So you just want to vote on that bottom?
Okay, which is, okay, so need a...
It's two separate pages. So he's going to vote on the next bottom line.
Which is page four, item 1410, the finance operations. I need a motion to approve the bottom line figure by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Great. That was sufficient. Now go to page five, Instructional Leadership in the amount of $2,777,825. Ms. CFO?
So this page includes an increase of three curriculum district support specialists/ coordinators. We are actually going to change the name, so you would see that updated in the final iteration. But it's three curriculum district support specialists. This was reflected in our program review as one of the citations. We also made the academic chair phys ed one FTE rather than the point five as we did last year. We wanted to reinstate the coordinator of data analysis position. This also was listed in Esser last year. And if you could remember, we, 1,400 was, we were going along, and that, after this page is when we started to do the, moving a lot of the Esser funds or grant positions to the suspense line. This one actually was approved. This is actually replacing the coordinator of research testing and assessment position. So it's the, it's actually a shift of funds, not an addition to. It's the Paul Schleppmann job. So these are the changes on this page.
Ms. Martin?
So the academic chair that you're citing here, that's the athletic director position?
What, no, actually, there's both now. So before, it was one and the same. Now there's one.
That's what I meant. But it's, okay, it's around, well, phys ed or whatever.
Right.
Sorry.
Any other comments or questions? Here we go. Need a motion to approve the bottom line figure by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page six, Principals and School Leadership in the amount of $9,926,495. Ms. Turner?
So this page, it has a $974,000 increase to the general fund. Again, we do have all funding listed on the page, but I'm only listing the increase to the general fund. We made, we had a reconciliation with principals and realized that with, there are 28 schools, there's, there are only four alternative schools here. So you do see an increase to the principal line. That's just an adjustment. One was, it was grant-funded under the alternative programs. Now it's listed back here. We also had an increase of five assistant principals, which were purchased current year with Esser Renaissance dollars after the budget cycle last year. In the final budget iteration, these five FTEs will be moved to the Esser FTE column. I don't know if you could, if you noticed that, but on assistant principals, I put the full 26 under general fund, when it should be 21, and five should have moved over. I moved the money over, but not the FTEs. Can you see that? So that will be, do you see it? That will be corrected in the final iteration. Lower High School also added four student service specialists through the fair student funding process. So they had two student service specialists. They want four additional positions. Those are listed in here. Also, a director of alternative ed was added to the general fund in this section. This is an example of monitoring the fiscal cliff. Last year, this position was listed under Esser dollars, but to ensure continuity, it was placed in the general fund this year. So those are the additions to this page.
Ms. Chun?
I have a quick question about school clerks. We have an increase of two additional school clerks, so which means that, which school or who are the two extra school clerks are assigned to, to which, to a certain school or?
I do know one, right? I think I know both. That was, that's one that I actually didn't study, but that, one of them is the STEM. Because the school is so large, they actually bought with their fair student funded money, an additional clerk. And I do believe the second one is the adult ed clerk that was one funded by a grant and now moving over to the local budget.
Mr. Rossi?
My question is about the alternative school coordinator for the blank, was that always grant-funded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, through you to the administration, my question is regarding the Director of Alternative Education. I just need to get familiarized with that role, because I know we have principals for each of the alternative schools and a coordinator. So remind me what the Director of Alternative Education, what that role is.
Sure. This is one that has been authorized and is currently vacant. It is posted. This is the Student Resource Center. So this is our direct outreach to students who have previously dropped out of school. So this doesn't oversee a school. Instead, it's the outreach to our students who have dropped out of schools. And we've seen this as a pressing need. We brought it to the committee through the subcommittee process this year. The committee did authorize it this year. It has been posted, but given the fact that it's vacant, it has an expenditure within your budget, so it has to, it's reflected here. But it's the continued position of the Student Resource Center Director.
Could I just follow up?
Sure, Ms. Doherty.
How does the Student Resource Center compare with the Engagement Center? I mean, isn't that a separate thing?
The Engagement Center is part of our alternative school portfolio. This is about direct outreach to our students who have dropped out of school and connecting them to our portfolio, or identifying and defining new aspects of that portfolio. So you also have within your Esser continuity or sustainability, $2.5 million earmarked for alternative education expansion. We currently have that earmarked in year three, so it's FY '24. But there's flexibility there within Esser, of course. But that's intended in case this particular position, working with the student outreach liaisons, if we're bringing students back for whom there is no programming option available, that money can be used to expand option like the Engagement Center, which is one of our alternative program options.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was curious about the student services specialists at the high school. So that was chosen through their fair student funding. Could you describe that position for me? Like where, where is it in the high school? And are there existing positions, and now they're adding four more? Is this new?
Mr. Skinner?
I can understand. Student services specialist says everything and nothing, all at the same time.
I'm afraid I don't know for sure what that position is.
If we could just get a, I'm just curious if it's a new position or if we're expanding, if we can find that out before the next budget hearing, that I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
I don't need to hold it up right now, so. Thank you.
Ms. Chun?
Yes, I have another question about the associate head of school. There's a decrease in so the FY '22 is $136,000. And when you look at the '23, it's a decrease of $2,017. Should that be a negative or no?
So this is, if you have, these single line items do get confusing like that. Here's an example. If we put something in the budget as a placeholder, and then the, that's a relatively new position. I think they hired them last year. So if we put something in the budget for $130,000, and then the raise was spread throughout on every number, and then when I did this year's budget, and I went through and actually took the actual salaries, the person might have received less than that we put in the budget for a placeholder. We put, when we hire someone, we don't know whether, we might put $120,000 in the budget, and we might negotiate with them and get them for $112. So it will look like a decrease, but it's really just their actual salary.
Any other comments or questions? Here we go. Need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of $9,926,495 by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page seven, Hostile Classroom Teachers, $96,858,15. Ms. Turner?
So this page, we actually saw a reduction in cost on this page, and that is because when we're in negotiations and we put a tentative amount, we don't spread it throughout the whole budget while we're in negotiations. So I put a placeholder for step increases and assumed CBA agreement raises. So if you look on the first, the third column at the bottom, you'd see a $5.2 million increase. That was a place. that was a placeholder for steps and raises. Well, that's been reduced obviously for this year, so that's why you would see a reduction. Overall, there was a thirty-five teacher increase. This includes fifteen additional ELL teachers and twenty-two PBR interventionist teachers to support behavior. This section also includes a budget exception line. I did mention this last week, but I, I think this one is one that I should just give you a little more detail. After reconciling the school budgets, we realized that there were additional funds that should have supported the fringe cost of supplemental positions. When we gave enough money for a social worker, we gave them a hundred thousand, but in the budget book that we built for the fair student funding process, we were charging them one eighteen. So, because that includes fringe. So we were only giving them enough. For those schools that saw a significant increase, they, they wouldn't have even noticed this. But schools that were not seeing an increase, that were being held harmless, they may have found themselves not being able to afford something. So we had to give budget exceptions. So the schools are currently spreading this. We did put all the money in, so your budget book does reflect what each school did get. But this last minute budget exception amount, we put in the other and let the schools email me now telling me where they want them. So we might find that we bought twenty more paras for our, and you'll see that on the final, you know, budget thing too. We're not going to leave the final budget book with a budget exception line. We're going to put it where it belongs. Also, this section reflects a behavior support supplement position, all the behavior support supplement positions that were purchased under the ESSER column and the early childhood expansion investment. So those are just, in the summary pages, it tells you everything, including grants and ESSER funding, funded positions too. But as for the general fund, I, it's just the thirty-five teacher increase in the budget exception line that I wanted to point out.
So this provides an example here, I think, to your questions, Ms. Doherty. Because you see the, you're not approving the ESSER, but we do provide that information. Some of the questions you were asking are line items within ESSER. So this is an example of that because you see the early childhood expansion. We're working through a, directly with our partners with an MOA. That'll be the specifics around these dollars. That MOA will bring back to you once there's a collaborative outcome from our partners. But that's under ESSER. So you're not approving that right now, but that's listed as a one point two five million dollars in ESSER. You don't have the specifics around that because we're currently working on the MOA now. So it's an example of, of those dollars there that are allocated in lump sum. But again, it's ESSER, not the general fund. The general fund is what you submit.
Ms. Martin, you all said, Ms. Doherty, and then Ms. Chun?
I just want to follow up on that. So we are just focused on the general fund for purposes of going through the budget. When will we get the ESSER breakdown and where that funding is going?
So the ESSER is part of this, so it's, we don't typically bring grants to the school committee to get them approved. We, with this being so large, we actually separated it out as its own column so that you have really, so we're being transparent and everything's, so that you're knowledgeable on what we're spending ESSER funds with. So we actually separated it out from the regular grants. In different sections, I believe it's section seven, it actually focuses on all of the ESSER funded positions and by each year. One other point to make with that as well, when the superintendent was talking about how when things are funded under ESSER, you may not get a plan if we're working on it. One example to add to that would be, say, behavior supplements. You know how that was one of your, one of your one of your causes that you wanted to, you know, champion, right? That was behavior support. So we didn't necessarily come up with a unified plan or program because we were doing the fair student funding. So one thing that the school, each school would get their supplement and they just had to explain what, how they were going to address behavior support. They could do the PBR teacher, which is what we approved this year in the middle of the year, or they could elect to do another, find another solution. Some of the schools did not elect to buy a PBR teacher. They chose instead to get two paras because they felt that having two additional bodies that could go into the school, classrooms that are having behavior issues would help support behavior problems. So we don't, we may not necessarily have one program or plan for behavior support or even mental health. Mental health was another example. There were a few schools that felt like they didn't need another social worker. They needed more of a BCBA type position that could support them in other ways. So we gave each school the flexibility of using the fair student funding approach and come up with their own unique ways. I did do a summary on that on one of the first few slides that showed the types of positions that were purchased with each supplement.
Ms. Doherty, you all said? Ms. Chun?
Yes, I was looking at, thank you for at, doing the expansion, early childhood. So my question would be, are we adding more classrooms? Or are we adding more towards local programs such as? I'm drawing a blank right here. I'm like, oh my goodness, like.
CTI.
CTI and all that stuff, so, thank you. So that's my question is, you know, are we adding more classrooms? I like seeing that and/or are we going, going towards other programs? Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So a little bit of both, not adding additional classrooms, but in some cases where the enrollment for a PM class or in a, in a half-day program has been low, there, there is a recommendation right now to convert some of those seats, full-time seats. But the majority of those seats would be with community partners.
You're going to see Ms. Chun, these types of questions directly relate to our last week conversation about the limited space throughout the district. So here, we've got a, part of our strategic plan is moving to universal pre-K. Previously, the limitation was funding and financing to move there. We found this year, the limitation's not financing, it is space. So it gives an opportunity to, for a public recognition of the collaboration with our community partners to make sure that we can get access for all of our families and trying to make sure we partner with our community partners around that space.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask about the increase in the English language learner teachers? I'm guessing this was driven a lot by the fair student funding, but if we could get some explanation of kind of that, why the, why an increase of about, what, fourteen, fifteen teachers?
Teachers, yes. So the, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and her staff predicted, based upon trends, how many positions, I mean, how many students were going to be in the schools in the fall? These numbers are still changing, and so that's one of the key reasons why we kept a fall reconciliation this year. That's an additional part of the fair student funding process that we haven't done because COVID and, you know, all of the extra money that was pouring in. But this year, we did indeed set aside funds so that we could look at the numbers again and make sure that we have enough coverage. The, the Assistant Superintendent knows all the rules for the testing of students, and if they're under a two point nine, they need two hours of pull-out time. Or I might not be, you know, she's here, if you want to give more details. But more or less, like, we had to make sure that we could cover all of the compliance issues. And those numbers were stated in the budget book as a required minimum.
So this is based on, on projections, Ms. Desmond, of an increase, I'm sorry, through everybody?
Yes, so actually, this school year, we saw our L population rise to twenty-nine percent of our student body. At the start of the school year, it was actually twenty-six percent. But over time, this year, we've seen it rise to twenty-nine percent. So we projected a thirty percent increase, which is based on some of the information we've received regarding, you know, populations that we expect to come here over the, the summer. And so we wanted to ensure that all of our students were receiving the correct pull-out and push-in instructional supports next year.
You just made that up, right? The push-in? Okay, that's a new one. That is exactly what I wanted to hear, thank you.
You all said, Ms. Martin? Ms. Doherty?
Just as a follow-up to that, I want to know how that connects to the fair student funding piece. Is that part of one of the guard, the guardrails? Like you have this number of ELLs, you need to have this number of ELL teachers.
It is very much part of the fair student funding process. One of the things, the initial things that we do is we feed in enrollment projections into the algorithm. We do it for overall enrollment trends for EL and special ed. And as you know, each of the prom schools present their budget to us after the end of the budget cycle. And of course, we have the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum there so that she can ask whether or not, you know, like, kind of encourage the principal if they did not elect to buy an additional position. She would encourage them, strongly encourage them to do so. One of the things, an algorithm is math, and one thing we found with kindergarten, if you have, if we have twenty-five kids per class and we've got two additional students, you wouldn't go and buy another kindergarten teacher because you don't even have a classroom to support that, right? So we ended up telling the algorithm to round down. So if, if you get two additional students, you would just have two classes with one extra student rather than an additional teacher with two kids. So the same thing happened with the L students. If you get, if the ratio had four teachers and then we went up by two students, we wouldn't necessarily have, it wouldn't round up to five teachers. It would round down. But what Ms. Desmond would say to the principals is that she would remind them that the dollars that they got from those students, they need to spend that amount, whether it was an EL teacher, EL para or whatever. But she would make sure she emphasized that they needed to have a plan to support the compliance demands. So yes, it's part of fair student funding for sure. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here we now need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of ninety-six million, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifteen by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lei?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page eight, medical and therapeutic services. The amount twenty-three million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred thirty-nine. Ms. Turner?
So this page, typically I just tell you that we have a general fund increase of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And then I would, I just would let you read about the grant funded positions that were currently on that page. But on this one, I do want to point it out for transparency's sake that we did move two million dollars to local budget up for tutors. And that is because each year, historically, for the last several years, we've had a significant Title I or Title Grant carryover that helps support positions like tutors. This year, being that we did retroactive payments for the thirty-three percent increase to tutors, it ate up a lot of that carryover grant amount. So we do have to put a lot more of the tutor cost on the local budget. So I just wanted to point that out, that that is a good example or a good reason of having all of these figures here so that you would see why, all the figures like the general fund grants and ESSER, so you see the movement between. We didn't decrease something, we just moved the funding. We also had two SLPAs, which are the speech and language assistants. They were reduced and an additional speech pathologist was added. That was based upon the special ed and the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum reviewing the plans and deciding that was the best plan of action. We have a behavior specialist added at the Le Blank using school site budgeting. Other changes to the section included an increase of paras by thirty-six, and that is because of those different things, like I said, the supplements. The average salary cost of a para did decrease by forty-five hundred, which saved the district two point two million. So even though we're seeing such an increase, if you wanted to know why we see an increase in the number of paras, but we also have an offset and decrease in the cost of paras. Why? So the, again, here's fair student funding. So as you, we think the salaries go up and you get raises, but as, we've had three hundred people retire over the last few years, right? And that, so that was just teachers, so imagine the paras too. So as you have people leaving the district, if they were making a hundred thousand on the way out, when we replace them with a fifty thousand dollar teacher, let's say, there, now you have a significant savings and your average salary goes down. So for the first couple of years, we were just increasing based upon raises, and then I started to see surpluses. And so I went and did a download of all actual teachers and paras this time, and the average staffs, I mean, the average cost for those have decreased by forty-five hundred. So it's just because of the staff turnover. I should have just said it real simple, staff turnover. Staff turnover saved us forty-five hundred dollars per para. No, we actually have more paras, thirty-six more, but each para is costing us less money. So if you multiply the forty-five hundred by four hundred and something paras, forty-five hundred in savings per para times over four hundred paras, it's over a two point two million dollar savings. So any, some paras were, just so you know, some paras were placed on ESSER. And again, this is just, this is not part of your general fund vote. It's just so that I'm, I feel good about being transparent. Some paras were placed on ESSER because they were the positions purchased as part of the behavior support supplements and/or building-based sub-coverage plans. Some schools were allowed to do a building-based sub-supplement. Some of them did not want to buy a building-based sub. They felt like if they purchased a para, it was cheaper and they could still, you know, they could do, they could make, make it work. So that, I wanted to point that out. And then other ESSER costs added to this page includes the building-based sub-purchases, additional cost of substitutes, investment into library services of two point nine million, and summer school and after-school programming. Just one last point, when you were asking about ESSER, not only is it in section seven as a summary spreadsheet, but every page throughout here, you'd see the details, like if you look at the ESSER column, you'll see all of the ESSER costs, so, page by page. So that's all I have for this page.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. So the behavior specialist that's being added at the Le Blank, is that the BCBA position or is that different?
It's actually different and.
Ms. Desmond?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
So back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the behavior therapist position titled Behavior Specialist in the Budget, the Le Blank staff felt was an effective position. It was changed to a BCBA. I'm not sure how that occurred, but I know that that had occurred prior to my being a part of the special ed department. Through an analysis this year, much discussion during our curriculum subcommittee meeting and working with the staff at the Le Blank. The staff at the Le Blank felt as if the behavior therapist position was much more valuable to their, to their school. And so we went back to that model and that position was reinstated. The person who had done it prior, who moved into a BCBA position, went back to that position and they're there full-time.
So that's replacing the BCBA that was there now? So the same person, though? The same person now is full-time at, at the Le Blank?
Right, doing the, performing the, the role that they felt was the role that met the needs at that school.
And that was more direct service as opposed to the BCBA?
Hundred percent, working with students, direct service, which is very different from what the job description is for the BCBA.
Thank you very much. And then my, my only other question on the library services. So I'm looking at, looking at my book here, where, what's the number associated with that? That's other ESSER costs added to this page and investment in library services?
It's two, if, it's on the library services, if you scroll all the way to the right, it's two, two point nine million.
So what, and this could be another situation where you're going to be coming to us with a plan, but, okay, so that.
There is a tentative plan already. Ms. Desmond already drafted a budget, but we, these would be individually brought to you still for approval. But it includes a library and at most of the schools plus of a bucket of money to start, you know, a book?
Book, like kind of capital as well as staffing? Okay, thank you. Did that, I'm sorry.
Ms. Doherty?
Actually, that, I would like to just make sure, are we talking about purchasing library materials and staff? Yeah, so we don't have a number yet of what that staffing would be. We just have this, the number of.
It's in, it's in ESSER right now, so it's not, you don't have to approve that one way or the other. It's the earmarked dollar amount based on our preliminary analysis. We need to do a school-by-school analysis on how much is capital versus how much is staff.
Any other comments or questions? Here we now need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of twenty-three million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred thirty-nine by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Lei. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page nine, coaching curriculum support, 2,825,155. Ms. Toner?
This page has a $639,000 increase to the general fund. However, before I go to the general fund, because the grant section did change, I wanted to point out that there was a $200,000 increase to the grant section as well, and that was due to purchasing two additional instructional slash literacy specialists. And I do believe those were at the schools like the Rogers School, who, if you think of it, it's like an elementary and a middle, so I think that was why they purchased it. But those were purchased through the Fair Student Funding process. As for the increase to the general fund, that was due to an increase of math resource teachers. It increased by three in the student, Fair Student Funding process. We added a tech instructional support specialist that was at the high school that's now at Central, so we're funding it. We added, we invested 160,000 into the Teacher Academy to assist with the costs necessary to mentor all of the new teachers in the district. And also, the S R section of this page includes 3.5 million in P D cost. 1.5 million of this cost is due to the additional learning time half-days. Those are the costs on the professional development page.
Ms. Thompson?
I guess I'm just looking to find out where the culturally, linguistically sustainable coordinator position falls into the budget, unless I haven't seen it yet. And I just didn't know where, where it fell.
It's definitely in there. I know it's in there. Okay, let's see, I think it's under pupil services, which would be under the third, let's see, it is. It's on, it's on the 3100 series and it's under Section Other Pupil Services, so, which is four pages from now.
Okay, thank you.
Are you all set, Ms. Thompson? Good. Ms. Doherty?
So I guess my question is a piggyback on Ms. Thompson. Does this 3.5 million in P D, does that include the diversity equity training as well as other professional development? And will we get a plan of how that? I mean, I understand that 1.5 million is now, because we're going to have a day.
Yeah.
We've added a day for professional development instead of the half-days, but I still, I'm looking for what the plan would be of.
Yeah, so our professional development plan for next year gets discussed with our principals prior to the conclusion of this academic year, includes both centralized offering as well as school-based offering. So that gets built out with, within our central office and then discussed with principals prior to the close of this academic year, prior to being finalized. So you're looking, it's about a month away from that, that plan being finalized and discussed. However, if you look at, go back, Billy Joe, if you can, what, the number you're, you're moving. All right, so the 3.5 you're seeing here is about the time, not the content of that time. So 1.5 is related to the two days. So that's two full days at a per diem cost. That's allows us to, that's the calendar. The other 2 million is, allows the flexibility around an hour per week for every teacher within the district at the school-based optional dollar amount. So that's around, that allows for schools. The question we had from schools was a lot of benefit to doing those days as full days and shifting the early release days. There was a concern and a question about the timeliness and flexibility if those days weren't there every month. So this allows the flexibility for an hour a week per teacher within your S R line. It's also an investment here that wouldn't cause us concern within the fiscal cliff, hence the reason that it's in the S R line. So 2 million on optional school-based P D, 1.5 on those two days that were approved within the calendar, hence the 3.5.
Thank you for that explanation. That makes perfect sense. Those are for the, the hours, the time of the staff. And I guess my concern is how we make the best use of that time. Because we've had mixed backs in professional development in the past, not just this administration, obviously. And I, I think for our staff, they want to get the best bang for their time, and, and that's what we all want. So that, that's really where my question's coming from, but this makes perfect sense. Thank you.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you. Just curious about the, the mentor stipends and how they align with increasing staff numbers? I mean, we're recognizing, we're bringing on a lot of new staff, a lot of new teachers. Is that reflected? I mean, it seems like there's an increase on, on general fund. Is that made in anticipation of these new positions?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, under the Teacher Academy, yes. The Teacher Academy-
I'm looking specifically at the mentors.
Yes, the Teacher Academy mentors increased from 18,000 to 49,000, then 14,000 to 34,000, and 60 to 70,000 for, for the, are you referring to the teacher mentors, right?
That's exactly it.
Right, yeah, so they definitely increased, yes.
So that was based, though, on the number of, the increased number of new teachers that we're anticipating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
And from my experience, that's in addition to what they're making now if they choose to be a mentor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Doherty, have one more question?
I'm just wondering what the 92, where did I see it? My eyes are going-
It's there, it's under miscellaneous.
It's there. It's like a big note.
I actually could get that, that could be one of the ones that I shared the details with. That's one of the ones that I did early on. I do believe it has to do with professional development, cost for the partnership with Fitchburg State. I can get the details on that for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here we're none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of 2,825,155 by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Chun. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page 10, non-personnel textbooks, 5,021,0821. Ms. CFO?
So the general fund increased by 1.3 million under this section. That was predominantly for the increased cost of instructional technology, including replacement parts, now that we have the one-to-one devices, and the staff all had new devices. We have replacement parts on both the administrative technology and, and the instructional technology. There's an investment in Raptor scanners, ClassLink, cybersecurity, ransomware protection, managed methods, et cetera. All technological increases. Just so you know, there were minor increases to supply lines that we don't historically touch, such as reading, special ed, mathematics, ELLI, increased those even though they were not requested, because I'm assuming that the costs have gone up and we need to see some more spending in those areas.
Any comments or questions? Here we're none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of 5,021,0821 by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Six, six yeas, one absent, approved.
We now go to page 11, guidance counselors in the amount of 8,168,677. Ms. CFO?
So the general fund in this section increased by 3.6 million, which was due to moving over 30 social workers to the general fund. The mental health supplement was funded by S R and approximately 22 additional social workers were also purchased. Other schools chose to hire additional paras to support mental health through having the support position intervene in behavior issues in the classroom.
Ms. Mon?
Can I ask you a question about the Director of Mental Health position? So that's a, a new position that's being added on with grant funds? Sorry.
Yes, this was the position that was approved by the committee about a month ago, I believe, that was funded through grants. It's currently posted. Ms. Desmond?
So it hasn't been filled yet. And what's the, what specific grant is it being charged to?
That's the new mental health grant that we just received that provided us with a director position, a district support specialist position, and then funding for our tele-health services.
Okay, that we talked about last week. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Doherty?
Yes, do we know, like, how long of a term is that grant? Is it a three-year grant or through you to the-
Ms. Desmond?
Yes, that is a three-year grant. We're in year one. We do have to re-submit every year so that our plan is updated, but it is, it does have a three-year span.
And is there any update on the mental health audit? Have we heard anything else about that through you to the administration?
We released it for the, for the first window. They completed unfortunately with no bids. So we've got to, we've got to reassess. We can reopen that, that window, and we can also look at alternative methods to have that completed, but there were no, no responses to the first, the first request for proposals. But we will reopen that, that bid window. Sometimes on the second opening, we end up with a different turnaround.
Any other com, Ms. Toner?
I just wanted to let you know, I did find the 92,000. I couldn't get into my computer, but now I figured it out. So the 92,000 on the Lowell Teacher Academy, the miscellaneous question, was there's a CES-LTA Sped Moderate Disability Licensor Program that they are doing, and that's 60,000. Then there's also two full-time sped mentors, Unit A, which would be $14,000 stipends. And the Lowell Teacher Academy doesn't have a clerical position, so they wanted to offer a $4,000 stipend for someone to assist with clerical duties. But so ultimately, most of it is for the Moderate Disabilities Licensor Program that they want to offer to teachers.
Any other comments or questions? Here we're none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of 8,168,677 by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to page 12, attendance and parent liaison services in the amount of 4,205,370. Ms. CFO?
So this section increased by 2.4 million dollars. The increased cost included raises, additional parent liaison support, special education parent liaison, and two additional bilingual parent liaisons. Two of these posi, I mean, well, actually, three of these positions were actually cited in the Family Resource Center audit results. In addition, the increased cost in this section included seven community school FTEs and contracted services for this community school program. That would include college and career readiness, youth leadership, anti-bias programming, mentoring, enrichment, and health and wellness. This page also includes a Parent Leadership Institute Director stipends and supplies. It also includes enrollment placement service placeholder until the audit came through. We did, as, we did list here that the FRC audit findings will support the addition of the front, FRC front desk support clerk, two additional bilingual liaisons, sped parent liaisons, and other costs that we are reading about in the audit findings now, such as, I, I don't, I can't find it, but it's a health, a health liaison, like, someone that would work in the health liaison role. So we would bring that forward to you before the final budget iteration with a plan of how we're going to implement hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of FRC recommendations when we only have X amount of dollars, so.
Ms. Doherty?
I'm wondering when we can get a copy of the audit? I think it would be very important. I'd like to read it.
We just received it in, in the districts, we're waiting for it in final form. I've, I got the preliminary findings to be able to share, build out the budget. All I, so I only have the preliminary findings, so once I get the finalized version of it, we'll certainly distribute that to the committee.
Mr. Rossi?
I just had a question in terms of the translation services. It looks like the same amount is, is set aside for next year as was this year, and I know there was a lot of issues with translation services, so I just want to make sure that, if we could maybe see the contract for that, or you can explain.
Okay, so the current year problems with translation did not occur due to not having sufficient funds in the budget. What happened is the translation companies have a staff shortage, as with many industries across the country. So what we did originally is, the original contract was for 250. We reduced that contract with that vendor who admitted that they cannot provide us with the adequate support. We reduced that and started smaller contracts with other vendors that provide translation to, so that we could try to improve what problems we were facing. So I, at this time, we have not spent the entire 250 despite having numerous vendors, so I don't think that we have a need to increase.
Thank you.
Ms. Chun?
With the CLSP Coordinator Program, is that a, a new hiring that you guys have?
This one was, this one was posted at the last committee meeting as the permission to post, so it's currently open and posted. Once the posting comes, meets its deadline, we'll then do interviewing and hiring. So the committee did authorize this posting at the last meeting.
And another question along with that is that, so they're coordinating, well, I'm reading the notes right now, that Herd each month and all this. Have we been utilizing some kind of program in terms of gathering our, engaging our families? Will, will that be part of something that we will look into in the future with that as well?
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you. Are you speaking about a program that already exists that we would purchase in its entirety?
Well, my question would be is, has it always, have we been using or utilizing having family engagement? So that's, that, yes.
So we did pilot a parent academy through DESI. We had a DESI grant. So we potentially could expand that out, but that has a very specific curriculum. So that's something we, we definitely would, would look at or think about. Are there other, are there other things that would better suit us here, you know, in, in Lowell, especially given our linguistically diverse community?
Are you all set, Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Mon?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So the, the parent leadership is the same thing as the parent academy, right?
Yes.
Some wise person suggested we might want to come up with a more leadership-friendly title.
So very wise.
Did I, and you know what? I did not change it in the book, so thank you for pointing that out. Exactly. All right.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, just on, on this page. So I understand we are looking to hire a CLSP coordinator. We're also going to keep in the contracted services for $230,000. I mean, that's, we've had people outside come in and do these presentations, right, while we haven't funded the coordinator position. So is the plan to have both coordinator and somebody who's going to come in and do the contracted services?
So, Ms. Phillips?
Sure. So this year, each of our schools identified a culturally and linguistically sustaining practices goal within, within their school plan. And so one of the things that I'm doing is looking at all of those goals, seeing what professional development, what resources they believe they're going to need, and then determining, do we have what we need in-house, you know, with just our CLSP coordinator? We do have 28 schools engaging in a, in a CLSP plan, so, you know, there, there may be a need for additional support across the different schools, depending on, on what the school has requested. And keep in mind that, that our DEI initiative, while we have focused initially on racial equity and justice, there are other aspects of inclusion that also need to be addressed, so it, it can get very complex depending- So it, it can get very complex depending on where a school's at and what they've identified within the realm of DEI to, to, as their target for the year.
Ms. Doherty, you all set?
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So we are, where our investment is, we're going to hire this person who's, who's got that professional development expertise, understands the complexities of DEI, professional development, get the buy-in from our teachers and our, all that. And then there's a fund of 400,000. I don't know if I'm reading it right because I really, can you correct? Is it the 400,000 number or is it the 200 above it?
I think, believe you're looking at the
Contracted Services.
Or Community, Community Schools?
That's, the one before that is the one
230.
230. So that's kind of like the budget the new coordinator will have to be able to find outside contracts who can come in. And I, I attended one that was, I can't remember the gentleman's name. Excellent job. Mo something? Is that familiar to you? Anyway, I'm not against doing it. I'm just trying to understand what our investment is with this coordinator and then about $230,000 in contracted services to try to tailor the professional development to the different needs of the different schools.
Ms. Doherty, I know you're looking that side, but I think Ms. Turner has, might have an answer for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner?
I think by answering this, I can feel like I've completed the slide so that the public can hear this as well. Ms. Phillips actually did give me a breakdown of the type of cost that would be included in the 230,000. It would include Heritage Month, Hispanic Success Equity Committee, diverse teachers, affinity group, welcome back events, and Lowell Student Advisory to name some of the known ones. I also wanted to point out that on this particular page, Ms. Sheen actually noticed something. And I was horrified thinking one of my formulas was wrong, but it wasn't. It was that one of the rows hid, hid on its own. I didn't do it, I promise. But anyway, it was, it was for equity contracted services. So it would cover the contracts that we currently have. And if you needed details on that, I could give those too. But those are the kind of costs that would be covered under the CLSP program contracted services.
What was the amount for the equity contracted?
It was not one contract. It was multiple. It was 60,000.
Okay. Ms. Doherty, you all set?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of 4,205,370 by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Mon. We'll roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, we're reaching a few minutes past eight. We're not going to be able to take up the whole agenda tonight. It's probably going to take us until 10, a little past 10. But does the member want to continue maybe for another half an hour until 8:30? Or you want to call it now? You'll call a recess? We're not adjourning it. We can take a recess and we can continue Monday. Do you want to maybe finish a few more or you want to, you have enough for today? So whatever the committee members feel like. I'm open to anything.
At this pace, these next, it would, I would say if we're going to work at this efficient pace, 30 minutes might get you through the entire agenda.
You're going to try for another half an hour or? Okay, for, okay. Let's aim for 25 more minutes will lead us to 8:30. And let's see if we finish superintendent. But if not, it's going to take us to 10 o'clock. It's one or the other.
Huge, is what I'm thinking. Some of these are really quick.
Okay, we now go to page 13, unless I speak faster, right? Page 13, transportation in the amount of 12,126,377. Ms. CFO?
So this section only shows a $505,000 increase in the general fund, and that's due to rate increases. I do want to point out the ESSAR section shows a million dollar addition, and that's for the high school bus pass program. Those are the only changes on this page.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with our current transportation contract, I know we had a lot of challenges. We had a lot of challenges with staffing. I mean, that, we all understand that, that situation. So as we move forward, are we looking at this, you know, the increase of 505, I know is determined by the contract? Do we think we're going to have the full slate of services? Because I know this year, that was a challenge.
It's, it's, it remains a concern going into next year. What we do know is we had a plan to bring forward a recommendation to expand transportation services to include our pre-K program. And we were told by our vendors that they won't be able to meet the expansion. Within your current budget, we're planning for a full range of services as typical, as standard, not this past year's standard. Plus, we're also planning for the range of services needed for your extended, for our extended day program. That's our current plan. We were notified they can expand services. We're hopeful, but beyond hope, at this, I would hate to give you any more confidence than that with what we experienced this year.
I mean, I think that it's wise for us all to be aware of that, so I appreciate that. And the second is the, you know, the million dollars for the high school bus passes. So that translates into how many bus passes for, for how many high school students through LRTA? Do we have a?
That was provided as an analysis from our transportation office. Do you have the specifics on the student-by-student breakdown? Or I might need to provide that to you under separate cover.
Yeah, we can, we can wait and get me, probably go on the website and find out what it is. But, I mean, it's a, it's a big investment, obviously, a million dollars. And I, you know, it's one of those things we've always wanted to do. I think we all see the value of being able to offer it. I, you know, like so many things, I just get really concerned about kind of making this move with ESSAR, knowing that this could very, you know, this could very easily be one of the first things that falls off when we get to that point. For those of us who've lived through this a little bit, you know, you talk about the preschool transportation. That was a huge hit, and it was very difficult for us to make that choice. But there was absolutely no other option. When it comes to spending money in a classroom or spending money on a bus, the classroom will always win. But it's just, you know, I, I think with ESSAR funds, it will be interesting to see what this translates into. If we can see, and I, again, I'd make the recommendation, real metrics as to what impact it has. Because there will be, there will come a time where we will have to fight about this. So having good, good information from the get-go is going to be very valuable. Thank you.
Ms. Chun?
About the supplies, is that classroom supplies that you guys are talking about? Or can you clarify on that, please?
The supply line on the transportation page? Yeah, we were, they were, we were discussing high school bus passes right now, which is at the top, and it's an ESSAR, it's an ESSAR-funded. It's first line, second section. But the supply budget is $8,000 for that office?
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the transportation issue. We are talking about expanding preschool to a full day. Would that include busing for those preschool children?
It, it includes our current bus transportation plan. There's not going to be an expansion of bus transportation. The vendors cannot provide that. So a select number of our preschool students, based on IEPs, have eligibility. There's different requirements for pre-K transportation versus other. But within our partner arrangement, it has to be part of our MOA. There's different availability of transportation within our partners than what we have within our vendor. So that's currently within discussion with them as to the availability of, of bus services through our partners.
So in terms of the, the children who will remain on the part-time preschool program, right? We have the morning and the after, that's still going to be there? We're just expanding it 100 seats for full day?
Full day, so.
But is that true? We're still going to have the, the part-time? The kids who go in the morning and then who go in the afternoon?
Part-time access. So here's the disclaimer. You might have a vacant seat in AM and PM that we consolidate to a full-day seat because there are no, no students that are demanding those seats. So the difference between seats and students. So if we take two full, two part-time empty seats and make them a full-time seat, the equation is two to one. But we would only be converting them if those seats are empty currently, not, not in terms of students. So additional students.
So I, I guess my concern with this, and I'm not against the, the bus passes for the high school kids at all. But I think we have lost so many of those young children. We know how important that early education piece is, especially for a student who's an English language learner. And I think because we can't provide transportation, and I was around when we lost it, I, I think we're losing those children that very early on, they would, because what are the, the evidence shows if you're behind in third grade, you're constantly behind. Like, we need to get them there as soon as we can. And I'm just wondering, you know, what the thinking is, investing a million at the high school level, but not having it for the preschool level? I just want to understand the rationale for that.
The cost for preschool was 2 million, which was in my original proposal of, of a budget. The challenge with that is we have no access to transportation. So making the commitment of dollars when we already have the analysis from the vendors. Here at the high school level, it's a million dollars. We have access to it because it's LRTA. LRTA can't provide for our pre-K. What you, what we gain as a community within the pre-K expansion, our plan is to move to universal access for four-year-olds. Our strategic plan calls for universal access from zero to five. It's going to be a continued collaboration. This is the first year we saw demand pick back up for pre-K versus the low point of COVID. Our partners are seeing the same increased demand. So I think this is a real exciting time of collaboration. We're working through the MOA. This gives us a starting point of universal four-year-old. And then we'll be back mapping it from there to three, two, and one. It's a data collaboration, student assignment collaboration, transportation collaboration. Just a lot of credit to the partners, and Ms. Phillips has been coordinating that work.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of 12,126,377 by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. We'll roll call, please.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Page 14, food service, zero. No vote needed because it's not in the general fund, just informational. We now go to page 15. Ms. Mon?
Just before we move on to this, so the recommendation then within this is to create a new position for the food service director? So that would be a LPS employee?
Yes, yes. It's an LPS employee. You can think of it along the lines of your current transportation director. We outsource all of the work there, but we have our own employee who's accountable, accountable to the school district for maintaining and sustaining those services. This is an eligible expenditure that we just got cleared through DESI for our revolving account. So it'll come directly out of the revolving account. But the intent here is that it is an employee that's accountable to the school district for managing those services, much in the vein of our transportation director position.
And we haven't had that position previously?
Historically, have we?
We had a, we, Rob Dagnan.
Okay, so I can't speak prior to 2019. So, Ms. Turner?
When I was here from 1998 to 2010, we had a food service internal program, and it was Rob Dagnan. And so, yes, I do know that we had a food service director position.
A while ago, okay. And this is something I think we're going to be talking about a lot, just kind of how we're spending the, the dollars on, on our food services. And, and, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of students. We've got a lot of families who are very vested in seeing that improve. When we have, when will we have the opportunity? I know in the past, we had the opportunity to increase our, the amount that we were spending. I think it's based on a per meal, not part of this budget process, I recognize, but kind of anticipating that that will be coming up before the end of the fiscal year for next year.
So two things to point out. One is we have charged $700,000 of custodians to the food service revolving account in the past. I did not do that this year because I knew that we wanted to make investments. So I let the 700,000 stay on the local budget. We have, I definitely have a list and can share that soon with all the investments we have invested in with food service. It's all been necessary type of cost. As far as the quality, we already have the top-tier quality. But they, I did ask that question based upon the feedback that I heard from you guys during the meetings. When I met with food service, they said that even though it's the top-tier quality already, there's always room for more spending, such as if you wanted fresh broccoli rather than frozen broccoli, let's say. You know, I'm using that as an example. I, I could, they might want to kill me after this.
I have very strong feelings about it, but yeah, okay.
But they, you, they can change, even though we are getting the top level, they can always change it by offering more.
And that's, I think, what we want to have an opportunity to talk about.
Okay.
Again, not part of this process, but as we move forward, I think that's going to be a, that's a topic we'll want to address. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Two quick points on the food service. I think because the previous food services director was managing an in-house operation, we should probably get a look at that job description and update it definitely and approve it. My second thing is, I'm hearing about, I know one of the challenges with the food service has been the remote locations. You know, getting high-quality meals out to those schools who don't have their own cafeteria facilities. And, and I can't think of the name of it, but I'm hearing about an organization that many of our nonprofits are using throughout the city where they contract out with this group for these pre, pre, what's the, pre-made meals that gets delivered, and they're like restaurant quality. They're supposed to be really good. And I, I can't think of the name of them off the top of my head. My question is, when we get to that point that we're looking at food service going forward, would we have the option of maybe, you know, cutting off some of our agreement with Aramac to provide these off-site meals through another vendor? Is that, do we have that? I don't know what our contractual obligation is with them and how long in advance it goes.
I can find out through DESI.
If I could, I would suggest that in any of these conversations, given our contractual obligations, we would handle these during executive session. So if I could allow staff to analyze the contract, bring back a recommendation under the confines of executive session so that you can maintain all of your negotiating authority and leverage as a committee.
Well, even just to tell me the length of the contract?
I would kindly suggest, just because I don't know the direction of the conversation, that we, you have the ability to maintain this in executive session by contract negotiation. I would just, I would probably recommend that. I don't have the contract in front of me to answer any questions specifically, and we can do it in executive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, I requested a report a few months back, I think, about the amount of lunches the STEM Academy is actually producing. They actually have less staff than Lowell High School and are producing more lunches and even pumping them out to the different schools, the satellite schools that do not have kitchens and need that. So I just, I know that they need help or resolve or solution. And it's, it's a lot on a staff to be able, to be able to function and to do that. So I think where Ms. Doherty is suggesting, looking to utilize some other type of resource is beneficial for all our kids, especially where we're getting complaints often about food quality and presentation. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any other comments, question? Ms. CFO?
I just wanted to point out that when I did meet with the food service vendor, they did have some suggestions that we would just have to look into now that COVID is dwindling down, let's hope, right? But one of the things they had wanted to do, they, one of the things they had suggested was we could find a location, like a kitchen location, a remote location that would provide to all of the remote services. So they have great ideas, it's just limitations of our own space. And I also wanted to point out that there's some of the examples right on that page of things that we have purchased thus far. So.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of, oh, that's the food section, I'm sorry. Go ahead of myself. I think we're reaching age 20, so we have time for a couple more. One more? One more, okay. But we'll, we'll do one more. It seems like the second half is slower than the first half. Page 15, athletics and student activities in the amount of 2,260,547. Ms. CFO?
This section increased by $280,000. The increases are due to raises replenishing the music program and student activity fund, increase in the budget for the athletics program. The athletics accounts were The athletics accounts were under fair student funding, and so the athletic director did petition to the head of schools, and they agreed to increase certain line items under the athletic budget. So these were all approved under the fair student funding program.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? Ms. Mohn?
These positions, though, go beyond the high school.
Which ones?
Like, within the athletics and student activities, it's not just high school positions, because I'm looking at some of them that are, you know, the Knowledge Bowl, that's a little school event, and-
Yeah, those were not increased, though, the Knowledge Bowl.
Exactly. But just want to make sure that it includes all the different programs.
Yes.
Thank you.
No other comments or questions? Need a motion to approve the bottom line figure of $2,260,547 by Mr. DeLea, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chung?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. DeLea?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
It's, it seems like this is a, a good spot to take a recess. We are not adjourning, we are taking a recess, which we may continue next Monday. So I need a motion-
To recess?
Uh, to recess at approximately age 25, say 8:30 PM, and to resume the budget deliberations and public hearing on Monday, May 16, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers, by Ms. Mohn, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chung?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. DeLea?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Almost, we almost made it.
I was signing it when it started the meeting, and-
Punch him up with the button. Punch him up with the button.